Good morning. The Prince George's County Planning Board is now in session. We are, I'm going to do this more in greater detail when we start the development review portion, but at this moment, I'm going to take a moment to, since we're going to have a presentation from the Department of Parks and Recreation, I'm going to take a moment to do something there. First, I guess I'm going to start with item 3D, the Division of Management Services. Who's doing it? Mr. Bilas? Your mic?
Acting Deputy Planning Director. Brandon, the Planning Department would like to create a new division, a Division of Management Services, which would be a focused division that will focus on the administrative and support functions of the other divisions within the Planning Department. This does not require any new positions, so we're not increasing the size of the Planning Department, but it would allow us to organize the department more effectively. As you may know, the Montgomery County Planning Department has had a Division of Management Services for many years, and we consulted with them, and it turns out it's been very effective in allowing the planners to focus on planning and the management support staff to focus on administrative matters. And so we believe this would be advantageous, and we seek the board's support, and if it's provided, it would become fully effective with the next budget year.
Okay. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay. Thank you. It is Parks and Rec Day, and since we're coming into the time for development review, I'm going to actually start my announcements, which I normally do before development review. I'm going to do them right now. So first of all, we always start our planning board meetings with a moment of silence. For those who have passed on, I wanted to have a moment of silence for Carol Riley, who is the wife of John Riley, who works with the Department of Parks and Recreation at M&amp;D at Randall Farm, and also for Lester Straw, who was the former director of Montgomery Parks at the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. The soldiers that were killed by roadside bombing in Afghanistan, and then the staff, Ian McLaughlin and Miguel Villan, and June Bacon, I think it's Bercey. She was the first female meteorologist in the United States. She died in July, but somehow this is just coming to light and getting some recognition. And so we wanted to announce that she was 90 years old, and she was a trailblazer who overcame obstacles for women and minorities, and who had largely been excluded from careers in sciences. She was the first African-American woman to earn a bachelor's degree in meteorology from UCLA, worked for the Weather Bureau, National Weather Service, NOAA, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and the Atomic Energy Commission. So we want to remember her as well. The victims of the airstrike in Syria, there were 21 people killed and more than 60 injured. And there were several television personalities that were killed too. The victims of the series of avalanches in northeast Pakistan, over 77 people killed and at least 94 injured. Rocky Johnson, who was the worldwide wrestling, WWE Entertainment Hall of Famer and former World Tag Team Champion, who also happened to be the father of Dwayne "The Rock" Johnson. We want to remember the victims in Puerto Rico who were impacted by constant earthquakes. And there may be others of you who have suffered a loss in intervening week, and if so, we extend our deepest sympathy to you, and may we have a moment of silence. Thank you. So again, it's the month of January, which is Financial Wellness Month. Good luck. Thyroid Awareness Month. National Volunteer Blood Donor Month. It is really very imperative that we consider donating blood because there's a tremendous need. And it is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I've been to many seminars on this. I've worked with the State's Attorney's Office on this, and it is very surprising to see how rampant and prevalent and ever-growing this is. So we have to wrap our arms around this collectively and ensure that we can eradicate this to the best of our ability. And so if you see something peculiar, you try to get help. There's so many resources out here. So we just don't want this. Okay, it's January 16th, and on January 16th, in all these various years, 1547, Ivan the Terrible crowned himself the first Tsar of Moscow. 1793, French King Louis XVI was sentenced to death during the French Revolution. 1870, Virginia became the eighth state to be readmitted to the United States following the Civil War. 1919, the Eighteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution was ratified by the majority of the United States, thus authorizing prohibition of alcohol. 1920, the sorority Zeta Phi Beta was founded at Howard University, and this is their centennial. I'll come back to more centennials, not centennials, but Founder's Days. 1939 was the debut of the daily newspaper comic strip Superman. 1974, Peter Benchley's book Jaws was published. 1981, because we want to honor women just because, that was the release of John Lennon's record, Women. Again, I want to say Happy Founder's Day to Zeta Phi Beta, which is today, they celebrate their centennial, to the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority.
Thank you.
Who yesterday celebrated 112 years since their founding at Howard University. But then I got to give a shout out to me too, because Delta Sigma Theta Sorority had their Founder's Day on January 13th, and celebrating 107 years. We want to say happy birthday to Sade, the Nigerian-born British singer-songwriter. This is amazing. Lin-Manuel Miranda, who is the renowned composer and playwright. He's only 40 years old. Now, you've got to think of In the Heights and think of Hamilton, and this young person could produce that, compose that. It's just incredible. We have special birthdays. I do want to give a shout out to the former Vice Chair of the Prince George's County Planning Board, who is alive and well and turned 95 years old today. That is Bill Ely. So 95 years old today, and we want to give a shout out to Bill Ely. We have Martin Luther King Day coming up. His actual birthday was yesterday, but we celebrated on January 20th, and we have to give meaning to celebrating this birthday. Many of us just marched day in, year in and year out in that cold, in those cold winters to make his birthday a national holiday. And so it is, but it's also in commemoration of all that he has given. It is a day of service. So if you are off on that day, don't sit at home watching TV. Get out there and do something. Do something to uplift others. So that's my word of advice. LSU in sports, LSU defeated Clemson for the NCAA College Football National Championship to topping off a 15-0 season, one of the greatest in history, and they beat seven of the top 10 teams on the road to championship. Okay, so we know, because he told us so, that Muhammad Ali was the greatest of all time, because he told us so. But there is another GOAT, another greatest of all time, and that is, congratulations to Ken Jennings, who holds the record for the longest winning streak in Jeopardy, 74 wins, but he competed against Rutter and Holthausen, who for the greatest of all time, and he actually won this week. And it's just, he's young and talented and not at all braggadocious, and we just want to congratulate another greatest of all time, at least in the area of Jeopardy. We want to give a shout out to Brittany Drakeford, who is pursuing her doctorate, and Brittany Drakeford is with our Planning Department, who works, she is the consummate definition of a planner. She has worked tirelessly and relentlessly on our zoning and subdivision rewrite, highly energetic, just amazing, and she is featured in the American Planning Association, and she's a national brochure article, and it's called The Planning. And so when you see Brittany, give her a shout out, because she deserves this, and it's really a nice write-up about her. So congratulations to Brittany. And then, okay, so it's Black History Month that is coming up in February, but it's the shortest month of the year, and we always kick it off on a Sunday, which always conflicted with Super Bowl, so we are moving it up earlier, so it makes it longer, and we have brochures in the back with amazing, amazing, amazing performances, and educational opportunities, and family fun activities. So the brochures are in the back, and the opening ceremony will kick off on January 26th at Harmony Hall, and our topic is Black Women and Politics: To the Ballot and Beyond. So we just want to make sure you get a copy of the brochure. Now, since it's, I think that concludes most of mine, so since we are getting ready to start with our Department of Parks and Recreation, do you have something? Department of Parks and Recreation, it behooves me to have our brand spanking new Director of Parks and Recreation, well, new as of February 9th, he'll start then. We want to introduce him to each and every one of you who is present or who is watching. So we want to introduce Bill Tyler to you, and as I said, he'll take over February 9th, 2020. He brings 27-plus years of experience as an executive and a senior-level leader within leisure services, fitness, and recreation management field. He has been, most recently, he served as the Division Chief for the Commission's Montgomery County Parks Southern Region, collaborating with his team and department to provide stellar services, programs, and facilities to Montgomery County's 1.2 million residents and visitors. He possesses extensive knowledge in both recreation and parks, which is imperative for our Department of Parks and Recreation. He's had countless leadership positions and goes the extra mile, because his mantra is servant leadership. He was also the Director of Health and Promotion Services from Library of Congress. He was with the YWCA and YMCA and Metropolitan Area Executive Management. So much experience, and we are so glad we swiped him from Montgomery County and brought him over to Prince George's County, where he will soar and enable our department to soar even greater than it has been under the direction of our amazing Department of Parks and Recreation, Debbie Tyner and her executive leadership. So without further ado, can we have Bill Tyler stand up so that he can be recognized? Thank you so very much, Bill, and we look forward to working with you. And I think that concluded my announcement, so I will turn to Ms. Tyner for your presentation for today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Board. Today, Debbie Tyner, Acting Director for the Department of Parks and Recreation until February 9th.
You're smiling much too much.
It's a pleasure to know that we have a homegrown and seasoned veteran coming over to the Prince George's County side, so yes, I am excited about that. Today, the Department of Parks and Recreation is before you again to bring to you information about an exciting thing that we're doing in the department, and I'm going to introduce Mr. Omar Eaton Martinez, who is the Assistant Division Chief for the Historical Resources portion of the National Natural and Historical Resource Division. Also with us is Mr. Dr. Dennis Dorster, who is our Black History Program Manager, who we can congratulate on putting together what we have to look forward to with the Black History Month programs. But that team is led by Ms. Christine Fanning, who is our chief of what we call nerd division. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Mr. Martinez Eaton to come up and introduce our speaker. Thank you.
Thank you again for this opportunity, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and other members of the Planning Board, the directors who are in the room, as well as the other attendees here under the sound of my voice. This is a pleasure and honor to speak to you this morning.
Mic up just a little bit.
Sure, absolutely. Is that better? Thank you. Is that better? Yes. So I'm always amazed and humbled at how immersed our charities with our histories. That wonderful rendition of centennials was perfect for me, the perfect segue. I want to add a couple more, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
We did have a Founder's Day for Kappa Alpha Psi, January 5th, and of course, for my beloved fraternity Phi Beta Sigma, we had ours on January 9th as well.
That's true.
So I'm happy here, wearing my pin in support of our sister sorority, Zeta Phi Beta. We also had the Centennial of the Suffragists Movement, which is part of what we'll be speaking today when Dennis talks about the theme. And what we didn't talk about today at all was there is a centennial for the Negro Leagues. The Negro Leagues started 100 years ago this year. We have been embarking upon inclusive interpretation in our sites. You know, we manage five historic house museums, four archaeological parks, and aviation museum. And of course, the Black History Program, which also has oversight over three, what I call Black Experience Sites. We have done things in the past, like Legends and Legacy, which talks about topics like education, Black women in politics, and looking forward, we're going to continue to delve into these situations. Last fall, we had a great program, a two-day program, at Mount Calvert Archaeological Park, where we called it the Echoes of the Enslaved, which also had an opportunity to have the Slave Droning Project come in and do these fireside chats about the legacies of slavery, as well as overnight stay on the site where we believe that the enslaved dwelled, which had almost over 100 people come and show up, which is basically the largest showing Joe McNeil, the founder of the Slave Droning Project, has seen to this date. We continued in the morning with the Public Archaeology Dig. You'll see a picture of that in your brochure. And then we ended with our panel of legacies of the enslaved, which Chairman Hewlett was there and able to give some of her remarks, which we really appreciate. Looking forward, we're going to do the Echoes of the Enslaved again in September of 2020. This year, we'll be doing it at Mount Pilgrim Historic Site. And we're also looking at doing something for the centennial for the Suffragists Movement to honor women's history coming in July 31st, so there'll be more about that as we continue to develop that program. So just reintroducing Dr. Dennis Dorster. He is our Black History Program Manager. He does oversee three sites along with the staff that he manages, one career staff and several part-time staff. He is a graduate of Howard University, where he was double-major in history and English, and he did receive his PhD and Master's Degree from University of Maryland in the Department of History. So he will now present to you Black History Month 2020. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. And thank you for recognizing the additional Founder's Days. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Hewlett, Vice Chair Bailey, and Commissioners. I'm happy to be before you all again this year to talk a little bit about what we are doing in the Department of Parks and Recreation for Black History Month 2020, and so you'll see the slide presentation that I will go through. And so as Omar mentioned, our national theme for Black History Month, which is set by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, is African-Americans and the Vote, which goes along with two important historical anniversaries. One, the 150th anniversary of the 15th Amendment, which extended the right to vote to African-American men, and then, of course, this will mark the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, which protected and guaranteed the right to vote for women. And that brings us to our annual Black History Month exhibition, which is curated by the Black History Program, which is mentioned is part of the Natural and Historical Resources Division, but I would be remiss if I did not note that this exhibition is a labor of love that is bringing together tons of people across divisions in the Department of Parks and Recreation. So our Public Affairs and Marketing Division, Arts and Cultural Heritage Division, our Maintenance and Development Division are all a part of making sure that we have a great exhibit, which I'm happy to say will be on display for two months this year, which I believe is a first, so it will be up for Black History Month and Women's History Month, which is fitting. So we'll be looking at Black Women in Politics: To the Ballot and Beyond, of course, celebrating that 100th anniversary of the centennial of the 19th Amendment, but then also looking at the period beyond that, what happens after that, and how Black women are very instrumental before and after getting the right to vote in the realm of politics, whether it be as political organizers, as voters, or as elected officials. And so we're very excited to have this exhibition up, and as has been mentioned, it will be at the Harmony Hall Arts Center in Fort Washington. Our opening reception, as also has been mentioned, will be on Sunday, January 26th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. We're excited that our keynote speaker will be our county executive, Angela Alsobrooks. We'll also have, of course, our annual unveiling of the Black History Month poster for this year. We also are excited also to have some musical components, so we'll have performances from the cast of the 19th musical, as well as master griot, Janice Curtis-Green will be coming to do her performance as Verda Freeman-Welkham, the first African-American woman to serve in the state senate in Maryland, and the first African-American woman to serve in any state senate in the United States. And as I've mentioned, the poster will be unveiled. This poster is created through a program that we created about four years ago, so this is the fourth year that we've done it, our Black History Program Visual Arts Summer Internship, which is a collaboration between the Black History Program and the Visual Arts Staff of the Arts and Cultural Heritage Division. This is an intensive four-week program in which we bring students together from all over the county, from different high schools, to learn about Black history in general, in our county history, but also to learn about our theme for Black history. So this year, we took our participants on a number of field trips, including to exhibits at the National Archives and the National Portrait Gallery, as well as here to the County Administration Building to see the County Council in action, as well as to the State House and to the U.S. Capitol. And so that poster, as I said, will be unveiled on the 26th. Here you see just some names, the names of the nine young women, all young women, that participated in this year's internship and created the poster that you will see, representing Laurel High School, Frederick Douglass High School, Sutland, Gwen Park. We have one student who is a resident of the county but attended private school, the Key School in Annapolis, Eleanor Roosevelt. So all over the county was represented in the creation of this poster. And our resident artist was Barbara Joanne Combs, who also is a resident of Prince George's County. And then you have before you, and then for everyone gathered here, if you don't have one, you can get one in the back or before you leave, we have our annual Black History Month brochure. We're excited, there are over 80 events that are planned, and these are from throughout the Department of Parks and Recreation, from central area to northern area to southern area, from our arts facilities to our historic sites to our community centers, and just a wide variety of types of programs for all different age groups. And so I'll close out by just highlighting a few of those programs, but I definitely encourage you all to read through the brochure, whether you have the hard copy or also it's available online on the www.pgparks.com website or blackhistory.pgparks.com. So one thing that started this week was the Cold Hands Warm Heart Exhibition at Brentwood Arts Exchange, which is interrogating questions about Black womanhood, so that will be up for the entirety of Black History Month. February 1st, we'll have a Black History Gospel Celebration at the Hillcrest Heights Community Center. February 7th, this program, Jazz Storytime, is specifically aimed at young children, so ages three to six, and that will be at the Bowie Community Center, so it's an interactive storytelling and arts program that will be there. A Knights of Women in Jazz, Sip and Paint, so something for the adults, that will be at our Sports and Learning Complex on February 7th. As Omar has mentioned before, there's great work being done by our archaeology program, and so they'll be hosting a program at Mount Calvert on February 8th, where people will be invited to come out and actually participate in an archaeological dig of the slave quarters that has been identified at that site. Field trips, we have a number of field trips in our brochure. One of them will be leaving out of the south of Bowie Community Center to go to the Harriet Tubman Museum on the eastern shore of Maryland. We have a special lecture at the Serat House Museum on February 15th with scholar Edna Troyano, and so this is definitely a timely presentation, as we talk about the history of Josiah Henson, the man who inspired Harriet Beecher Stowe's Uncle Thomas Cabin, and as we get ready on the Montgomery County side of our commission to, later this year, open the new Josiah Henson Visitor Center. This is very timely in that sense. February 16th, Voices from the Past at Mount Pilgrim Arts Center in Laurel. They will have a musical program where they're partnering with the Coalition for African-Americans in the Performing Arts, and they'll be performing the works of the man who is known as the Black Mozart, Joseph Bologna, who was the Chevalier de Saint George. And then this is the last program I'll highlight. This is on February 21st, one band, one sound, so will be local high school marching bands who will be tapping into that important tradition of HBCU marching bands, and so that, as I said, that'll be on February 21st at Newton White Mansion. And these are just a sample, a tidbit of, as I said, the over 80 events that are planned throughout the Department of Parks and Recreation. I must acknowledge the programmers throughout the department who have done great work and do great work every year in pulling together these events for our community. And then lastly, I would be remiss that Black History is not just February. As you mentioned, February is the shortest month, but what we do here in the Department of Parks and Recreation, and what we do in the Black History Program, is that we celebrate, honor, and promote Black history year-round. And so with that, I thank you all for this time, and I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Duster. We really appreciate it. We appreciate the whole team, Ms. Fanning, Mr. Omar Martinez Eaton, and also we'd like to thank Ms. Artura as well. She's worked very, very hard on this. But the programs that are put on by the entire department, and we collaborate with others, are just phenomenal, and we have, once a month, we have a Department of Parks and Recreation presentation at our planning board for the benefit of the citizens who are in attendance and those who are watching online, so that you can participate as well. They're not specifically for us, they are for our entire community, our entire Prince George's County community, and our guests and visitors. So we welcome you and invite you to come and participate. Please take a brochure in the back and just bring your families. They're wonderful family activities and wonderful opportunities to engage and learn and have fun all at the same time. So thank you so very, very much for this, and everyone, please pick up a brochure. I'm sorry. Madam Vice Chair, here.
Madam Chair, as from my seat as a member of the National Board of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, I want to commend Christine Omar and Dennis for the work that they do, and the entire staff. I get to see what happens all across the country, and nowhere else in the country are the programs as diverse and as interesting as what we do in Prince George's County. You do an outstanding job, and one of the things I really like is during Black History Month, in many communities, there's always just the singing and the dancing, and one of the purposes of the Black History Month, as Carter G. Watson, the founder of the association, wanted it to be, was to show the diversity and the range and the knowledge of African-Americans. And so we do that here. We do more than sing and dance, and that's one of the things that you do exceedingly well, and I just want to commend you on the work that you do. It is absolutely outstanding, even though I can't sing and dance, but that's neither here nor there, but the work that you do is absolutely amazing. It is the absolute best in the country, and I want to commend you on that.
Well said. So if I could just say ditto, I associate myself with Madam Vice Chair's comments.
Do as well, Madam Chair.
Okay, so thank you very much to the department, and kudos as always. I'm going to go proceed with our development review items, and I'm going to start with 10, 11, 12, 13 resolutions. I have no one on the sign-up sheet, so I'm asking right now if anyone is here on resolutions, items 10, 11, 12, or 13. Seeing none, I'm going to start with item 10, which is a resolution for the National Har- no, yeah, 10, the National Harbor Beltway Parcel, Parcel 7, which was heard on January 9th. Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item 11, which is also a resolution for National Harbor Beltway Parcel 7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. We have the resolution. Opposed, the ayes have it. We have the resolution on item 12, which is the Green Belt Metro Detail Site Plan. Is there a motion?
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item 13 is planning. And just, any need to comment? Amendment to the Prince George's County Planning Department approved FY 2021 operating budget. Do we need to say?
He was coming up.
Okay. While you're coming, Mr. -- well, you know, it comes to speak first. Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair Bailey, and members of the board. I'm coming to you this morning to request approval to amend the Prince George's County Planning Department's proposed FY 21 budget. We would like to increase our staffing complement by one position. This one position will be housed in our environmental planning section. We want to hire a professional engineer with expertise in soils within the county. The position will address issues that arise with development applications that are proposed on problematic soils within the county. Currently, the environmental planning section's staff coordinates with DEPI on soil issues, as DEPI has a soils expert. I would note that the role of DEPI in the development review process is typically stormwater management, and it's our belief that these issues related to soils should be addressed in the Prince George's Planning Department. So with that, I request that this be approved.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Johnson, while we have you here, we announced this during your absence, but please know our hearts and our sympathy go out to you upon the loss of your dad.
I really appreciate that. That touches my heart, and I appreciate your prayers and support.
Thank you. Do you still have them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're going to proceed with items Companion Cases 5 and 6, which are the detailed site plan and departure from parking and loading standards for Ardwick-Ardmore Road.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, I am Andrew Bishop with the Urban Design Section. Items 5 and 6 are a DSP and a DPLS proposing a food and beverage store in combination with a gas station and the reduction in the required number of loading spaces on-site. The site is located in central Prince George's County in Planning Area 72, Council District 5.
Quick and verified subscription.
The property is in the north quadrant of the intersection of Ardwick-Ardmore Road and Maryland 704. The property is in the I-1 zone, and outlined here in red, the aerial shows the existing gas station building on the site, which is proposed to be raised with this application, and it outlines the property here in red. The site is flat and currently improved with the gas station and does not include any environmental features. The master plan right-of-way map adjacent to the site show the arterial of Maryland 704 and the industrial roadway of Ardwick-Ardmore Road shown here in red and brown. The slide shows the bird's-eye view of the existing gas station and looks north from the intersection of Maryland 704 and Ardwick-Ardmore Road. This exhibit is an illustrative of the property and shows the proposed improvements on the site. It's important to point out that this was added to the PowerPoint presentation after it was initially published. The site plan shows the proposed gas station, food and beverage uses on the site, and proposes parking on the front sides of the building, with circulation that has been found sufficient. DPLS 464 has been filed with this application to eliminate the required loading space on the property and is discussed on pages 10 through 13 of the technical staff report. Staff believe the site layout can be reconfigured to remove some of the proposed parking spaces on-site to provide one required loading space without impacting the other bulk regulations on the site, and is recommending disapproval of the DPLS, and the applicant is in agreement with the site's conditioned reconfiguration. This exhibit shows the landscape plan for the property and includes alternative compliance AC 020, which requests relief from the required landscape strips along Maryland 704 and Ardwick-Ardmore Road. The site constraints limit the application's ability to provide normal compliance. The planning director has reviewed the application and recommends approval of AC 919020, subject to the conditions included in the staff report, to provide additional plantings and excess of what normally would be required, and the applicant is in agreement. The following slides show the freestanding building-mounted and canopy signs proposed with the application and meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, as discussed on page 5 of the report. The architectural elevations for the food and beverage building show the character of the proposed building, and staff recommends additional architectural treatments on the sides and rear of the building, as included in Condition B1F, which requires additional architectural treatments on the side and rear of the elevation, and include the use of faux windows, brick inserts, service doors, and/or vertical banding. The applicant has agreed to this condition and will be proposing a revised condition to specify the number of treatments on the side and rear elevations. Staff has reviewed this revised language and is in agreement. The DSP was evaluated for conformance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, previous approvals, the 2010 Prince George's County Landscape Manual, the Woodland and Wildlife, and Tree Canopy Coverage Ordinances. The DSP conforms with this design criteria, and the Urban Design Section recommends the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve DSP 18054 and AC 19020, and disapprove DPLS 464. As I mentioned previously, the applicant will be proposing revised condition language that staff has reviewed and is in agreement. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Lynch.
Good morning. For the record, Dan Lynch, Law Firm of McMahon-Hosey, here on behalf of PMIG. We're here again with regard to the existing gas station, which we're going to erase and rebuild on. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Bishop. It's always a pleasure working with him on this, and as a result of his guidance, we were able to reduce the amount of on-site parking and comply with the parking, excuse me, with loading space requirement. As Mr. Bishop indicated, we are merely suggesting slight tweaking to one of the conditions of approval that I'd like to submit to the board for its consideration. And this merely goes to Condition B1F, and as indicated by Mr. Bishop, we're just, we're suggesting a clarification on the number of architectural features that are added to each side of the building. And just to make sure that we're just going to be adding one additional architectural treatment to the each side elevation and to the rear of the building.
So that's the only condition?
That is the only condition we're suggesting.
Okay. So we're going to accept this, your proposed revised condition into the record as applicant's exhibit number one. Okay. And you indicated you're okay with this, Mr. Bishop.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And then other than that, the applicant agrees with the staff's recommendation and other conditions of approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions this board has regarding this application.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions on this one? Commissioner Duana?
Just a question on the reconfiguration of the site, the DPLS. Are you going to reconfigure the site, then, to put in the loading space?
That's correct. Based upon our discussions with staff, we were initially providing parking over and above that required in the zoning ordinance. By reducing the amount of parking required on-site, we were able to reconfigure it and provide the loading space.
Okay, so you're fine with the disapproval of it?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So are there any other questions? Was there anyone else to speak on this matter? There was no one else on the sign-up sheet. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, excuse me. I move that we approve DSP, accept the findings of staff, as well as the conditions outlined as further supplemented by applicant exhibit number one, and approve DSP 18054. Let the record reflect that the applicant agrees with staff's recommendation that DPLS 464 is denied.
And that we also approve alternative compliance 19020.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, item 7.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I am Eddie Diaz-Campbell, Senior Planner with the Subdivision in Zoning Section. Item number 7, the agenda, is the preliminary plan of subdivision for North Gate, 4-19019.
Can you just raise the microphone a little bit? That's what I was thinking. Okay, thank you.
Subject property proposes one parcel for mixed-use development, including 296 residential units and 1,084 square feet of commercial development. As a matter of housekeeping, yesterday, staff received recommended conditions of approval from the City of College Park, which have been distributed to the board.
Hold on, wait a minute. Received yesterday.
Got it. Thank you. What was it, in time, or does it need to be admitted to the record? What was it?
Madam Chair, it was admitted in time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So this morning, staff has handed out additional backup consisting of staff's responses to the recommended conditions of approval, which will be discussed further. These responses are also being given to the City of College Park at this meeting.
Okay, hold on a second. I'm not sure I have the responses. Do we, we do have that?
Yes, they're.
Really? Okay. Oh. And they were handed out this morning?
Yes, at this meeting.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So, so, so we have the letter from the City of College Park, which was submitted timely, so it does not have to be admitted to the record. Your responses were distributed today, so this will be staff exhibit, and we'll have this accepted into the record as staff exhibit number one. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And this is your response. Okay, you can proceed, okay.
All right. Okay, so this site is located in the northern part of Prince George's County within Planning Area 66 and Council District 3. More specifically, the site is located on the west side side of US 1, at its intersection with Quebec Street. Subject site is located in the mixed-use infill MUI zone. It abuts the Paint Branch Stream Valley in the reserved open space zone to the west, which is on MNCPPC property. Commercial uses in the MUI zone to the south and to the north, and US Route 1 to the east, with commercial uses in the MUI zone beyond. The overlay map shows the subject site is within the DDO zone, subject to the 2010 Central US 1 Corridor Sector Plan and sectional map amendment. The site is also within Aviation Policy Area 6. The site map shows that the topography on the site is generally flat, but at the western edge slopes down steeply towards the stream valley. The aerial photograph shows the site is developed with an existing fast-food restaurant and an abandoned building. This photo shows another view of the fast-food restaurant on the northern portion of the site and the abandoned building on the southern portion. Both buildings are to be raised. Master plan right-of-way map shows US 1, which has a master plan major collector right-of-way east of the site. The critical intersections determined to be impacted by the development are shown by the seven yellow boxes on this slide and are further described in detail in the staff report. Given the proposed development, it was found that the critical intersections would continue to operate at adequate levels of service. Master plan trails map shows that four master plan trails are adjacent to the site. These include, from left to right on this slide, and I'm putting them out, the existing Paint Branch Trail in solid green, the Planned Paint Branch Trail Connector in dashed green, a planned side path along US 1, and here in dashed red, a planned bike lane along US The site is subject to provide off-site bicycle and pedestrian improvements, as well as on-site recreation area for new development. In addition, the project proposes to fill the property above the 100-year floodplain elevation, requiring compensatory storage for floodwaters on the adjacent MNCPPC property. The applicant is proposing a system of on- and off-site recreation, pedestrian, and bicycle improvements, measured with the combined value of, one, the BPIS cost cap, two, the value of the compensatory storage area, and three, the required value of on-site recreation facilities in lieu of mandatory dedication of parkland. This slide shows the approximate locations of the improvements associated with each of these three items. The improvements appropriated by the applicant include a pocket park on the US 1 frontage, located here, a section of on-site trail leading from the pocket park to the rear of the property, a promenade at the rear of the property, and a section of the Planned Paint Branch Trail Connector leading from the rear of the property to the south. There are also private recreation facilities inside the building for the residents. Staff supports these appropriate improvements. Additionally, staff in conjunction with the City of College Park and the Parks and Recreation Department is recommending that appropriate public use easements be dedicated to each of them to cover the proposed on-site public trail and recreation amenities, as well as the sidewalk along US 1. The off-site trail and recreation amenities will be reviewed under a separate mandatory referral application, which has been filed with the planning department. The applicant's site comprises two existing parcels, each of which is subject to a different prior preliminary plan of subdivision. However, the subject DPS, if approved, will supersede the previous plans. The two parcels together total 2.05 acres. Two of the four existing access points are proposed for retention to serve the property. The preliminary plan shows one parcel is proposed, outlined in red. The abutting public street to US 1 is in blue. There is no right-of-way dedication proposed or required with this application. Acute public facilities, including water, sewer, fire, rescue, and police facilities, are available to serve the subject site. This application is subject to the Woodland Conservation Ordinance, and a tree conservation plan type 1 has been filed with the application. This TCP 1 shows the subject parcel, outlined in red. The abutting public street is shaded in blue, and the primary management area is shaded in green. Staff supports the PMA impacts because the regulated environmental features on-site have been preserved to the fullest extent possible based on the limit of disturbance for the project. This application also includes a variance request for the removal of This application also includes a variance request for the removal of specimen trees. Five specimen trees are proposed for removal, but only three are on-site and therefore subject to the variance request. The three on-site trees are represented by the green Xs, while the two off-site are represented by the gray Xs. The applicant argues that preservation of the specimen trees would be prohibitive to development. Staff is recommending approval of the variance requests for the three on-site trees. Removal or preservation of the off-site trees will be handled through the mandatory referral for the off-site trail project. In conclusion, the subdivision zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan of subdivision 4-19019 and variance from Section 25-122B1G, subject to the 16 conditions contained in the staff report, with proposed revisions to condition 1A, as outlined in the memo to the board dated January 16, 2020, and handed out this morning. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz Campbell. Are there any questions?
Just one, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Girardot?
I see the reference to the height restrictions, and it's necessary to file an application with the state, but I see no reference to the noise restrictions. Would that be done at the detailed site plan?
There are no noise restrictions for this site because the project is on a major collector. There would be noise restriction if it were on an arterial street or higher classification.
Even under the state guidelines?
I don't know the answer to that question, but are the state guidelines similar for noise?
Pretty far away from the airport. This isn't like a commercial area. There's not a ton of residential there. But I don't know the restrictions.
Good morning. Sherri Connor with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. The APA regulations, including the height restrictions, will be further evaluated at the time of details like that.
Well, that includes the noise regulations as well.
I think this is in the height restrictive zone, and so it will be evaluated for the height restrictions.
That's not answering my question.
I think I may understand your question, Commissioner. So, the Aviation Policy Area overlay zone, which applies to general small aircraft aviation airports in the county, has height restrictions. It does not contain any noise restrictions.
But the state may. That's what I'm saying.
The overlay over Joint Base Andrews contains both height restrictions and noise restrictions because of the intensity of those aircraft, but the airport is active. And when you have an active airport, my understanding from when I sat on the board of airport zoning was that you have noise restrictions as well. So, I don't know if this one falls within it. That's all I'm asking.
Let me stop for a second. So, we have council looking that up, and Mr. Haller, I don't know if you have any light to shed on that as well. Okay.
We'd be happy to look into it.
Okay, so we'll look into it, but Mr. Haller, let me see if there are any other questions first for Mr. Diaz Campbell, and if there are that we can ask. If not, we'll go to Mr. Haller for their presentation while we review this. So, are there any other questions for Mr. Diaz Campbell?
No, I'm fine.
Question on this particular slide.
Commissioner Dornar?
So, on the TCP, what's being preserved in the woodland that's between the sort of vacant parts of where the structures are on these sites and the actual stream that runs behind it on the north side? Or I guess that'd be the west side of the property?
So, between the building and the stream on the west side of the property, there isn't a lot of space on the actual property that, off the woodland on the actual property is supposed to be cleared. Off the property on the MNCPPC property, you will have to look to the mandatory referral to determine what sort of clearing is happening.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions at this time? Mr. Haller?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and happy new year. I think this is my first appearance in 2020. I can't believe we're in a new decade. For the record, Thomas Haller, on behalf of the applicant and also the owner of the property, which is an affiliate of the Gilbain Development Company, you've seen Gilbain before you. They're also working on a project at the College Park Metro Station.
And many others of our projects.
And many others. This particular property is being done as part of their student housing division. Gilbain is one of the leaders in student housing around the country. They've constructed over 30,000 beds in 120 campuses, and so the University of Maryland is something that is a great opportunity for them. And I have with me Mr. Christian Syria, who is with Gilbain Development and a proud graduate of the University of Maryland, so this is a labor of love for him as well. He knows all the haunts. I know the old haunts.
If I remember correctly, we have a wonderful sports and learning complex, Curry Sports and Learning Center, too. That's right.
Yeah, they have a construction company as well. They did the renovation of the Colefield House, and they're very active in the state and in the county as well. And also with me have Andrew Lor with Bowler Engineering and Mike Lenhart, who are traffic consultant. This is a really exciting project, and I really want to talk to you about the detailed site plan because there's some really neat features incorporated in it, but we've got to get to that. But there are a couple of items that will be relevant to talk to you about. The application itself is fairly simple in that it is taking two previously subdivided lots and consolidating them into one. But like a lot of other properties in Prince George's County, this has a tremendous number of challenges that only a company like Gilbain could wrestle with. One of the big challenges that we have in this particular situation, we have two existing buildings on, one on each lot. One of them has been abandoned for almost 30 years, and it's really an eyesore along Route 1. The other one is an active operating Burger King fast-food restaurant. As you probably are aware, in the Route 1 Corridor Sector Plan, drive-through fast-food restaurants are not considered to be pedestrian-friendly and are not, and they're non-conforming. They're not permitted in the DDOZ in this area. And so this development will involve removing both of those restaurants, closing down the Burger King and raising both of them, in order to construct a student housing project. This property is designated in the sector plan as the beginning of the university, the walkable node university. In other words, this is, as you're coming south on Route 1, this is where you go while we're at the University of Maryland. And you will see in our detailed site plan how we've attempted to make this a placeholding property and a landmark property. But there were a couple of challenges that we had, and one of them is that as this property moves from Route 1 to the west, it's got some severe topography, and it's got some encroachment of floodplain associated with Paint Branch. And that leads to a lot of the complexity of the property because in order for us to be able to get to where we are today, we've had to work with the State of Maryland, with Department of Permitting Inspections and Enforcement, with the Army Corps of Engineers, with State Highway Administration, with the City of College Park, a lot of different agencies in order to get to where we are today. One of the big changes that has occurred, and this is a regulatory change, is that there are other student housing projects that have been built along this area of Route 1. If you are familiar with them, or if you walk behind them, what you will see is that they are built on pilings and with rocks underneath the building, which allow the floodplain to continue to exist under the building. That was the way that those were constructed, under the regulations at the time. When Gilbain came in, involved in this property, their assumption was they would be treated the same way. But DPIS changed their policy. They don't allow that anymore. They require you to fill the floodplain and provide compensatory storage off-site. That added, and in fact, this property, and you'll see in your back of this property, was the subject of a prior detailed site plan, it was approved under that premise. And however, with the change in regulation, that required the applicant to find where to do that. And that led to a conversation with the Department of Parks and Recreation, which owns the property to the west, and with the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers has been engaged in a multi-year project to stabilize Paint Branch, to improve the stream channel flow, because there had been erosion that had been occurring naturally. And they've done that work, they completed many years ago, but then they've had some issues over time with certain areas that needed to be retrofitted. So, the timing of this project has actually worked out really well because the Army Corps of Engineers is in the process of fixing some of the issues elsewhere, and this property will help to address issues at this location. But as part of the filling of the floodplain on our property, it involves providing compensatory storage on the Department of Parks and Rec property to the west, which goes to Commissioner Dornar's question about the trees. We will be removing trees immediately behind the property on park and planning land, but then we'll be replanting them. Because as part of the compensatory storage, it's not a pond or anything, it's simply lowering the elevation to provide additional storage capacity. And the trees that exist there now are either invasive or very poor quality, and we will be able to replant that area and reforest it with essentially native species. And then between that and the retaining walls we put in, ensure that the stabilization of Paint Branch. If you were to walk behind there now, you would see that some of the scouring that's occurred as a result of issues with Paint Branch that have been largely fixed by the Corps of Engineers, but this site will address stabilization along this area as well as have the student housing projects further to the south. And so that has been a big challenge. The other thing that the filling of the floodplain has led to is that when the prior project was done, which was back in 2006, Park and Planning expressed an interest at that time in creating a trail system on the east side of Paint Branch. There's already a trail on the west side of Paint Branch, but when the University View Student Housing Project was built a few properties down, they constructed a pedestrian bridge across Paint Branch that provides immediate access to the university, where it's where the Comcast Center is, it's where the fields are, where the field hockey fields are, and provides great access to allow this to be an appropriate location for student housing. That trail right now is on the University View property, but the vision was for the trail to extend to the north along the east side of Paint Branch. And so we are proposing to actually construct that trail that has been planned for some time and to connect it into this property. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when we discuss the conditions. So, that just provides you a little bit of background. With regard to the staff's recommendation, the conditions, we agree with them. The only changes that we have relate to the City of College Park's requested condition that they provided to you yesterday. And so what I'd like to do, if I can at this time, is to pass out our proposed revisions to the conditions, and then I have one other exhibit that I'd like to pass out as well.
So, Mr. Haller, you said that you agree with everything with staff. The only comment or change is to the conditions emanating from the City of College Park.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Haller, we're going to accept your proposed revised conditions into the record as applicant's exhibit number one. Okay. So, 1A, B, and C, are the city's...
So, conditions, and the only changes are to condition 1. I've included all the conditions, but the only changes are to condition 1.
Thank you.
Your staff had already written a proposed condition 1A and 1B. And what we're proposing, and as a result of the comments received from the City of College Park, staff proposed changes to the language of condition 1A, and those are reflected in here. So, this is the condition that your staff suggested to address the city's conditions, and we're in agreement with that. I don't think there's any...
Okay, wait a minute. Let me make sure I got that right. Okay, so we had conditions that are in the technical staff report. The City of College Park, in their letter, provided proposed conditions, and then the exhibit that we accepted from staff today, staff exhibit number one, addresses the city's proposed conditions to one, conditions for one, and that your applicant's exhibit number one is a response to...
To all of that.
All of the above. Okay, just making sure, okay.
So, I think the easiest way to do it is just to kind of go through the city's requested conditions, and I'll show how they're being addressed. So, the city had requested a public access easement to the city for any public sidewalk or amenity located outside of the state right-of-way. So, the, as I think the board is aware, State Highway Administration is...
So, let me...
I'm sorry.
Okay, so let me make sure we're straight. So, Ms. Bader is here, and Ms. Schum is here. So, do they have...
Yes.
Have you been given these, your proposed revised condition? Okay, thank you. Right, go ahead.
So, the board is no doubt aware that the State Highway Administration is working on an ongoing project to improve Route 1 along this area, and so there has been a lot of coordination with State Highway Administration with regard to utilities and whatnot. We are going to be making improvements which will be reflected in the detailed site plan to widen the side...
Can you raise that a little bit?
I'm sorry. To widen the sidewalks along the property frontage, and some of the sidewalks and some of the amenities associated with the building, scooter storage, bike share, bike storage, and a pocket park that was referenced earlier, are going to be incorporated into the streetscape. And they are actually outside of the right-of-way, and the city wanted to ensure that there was a public use easement for the sidewalk areas and the amenity areas that are outside of the state right-of-way. We're fine with that. And so the condition that was originally included in the staff report talked about a 10-foot easement, but the amenities and the sidewalks go further, more than 10 feet beyond the state right-of-way, so we just wanted to make sure that the condition was drafted broad enough to cover all of the streetscape amenities and all of the sidewalk areas. So, that's what 1A change accomplishes.
Okay. There's nothing on B. Right.
And then the second condition that the city has asked for is to provide a minimum 10-foot public access easement along the Burger King property to allow for a future trail connection. And your staff has indicated that they don't believe that it's necessary. We, on behalf of the applicant, would like to proffer that condition to the board, and let me just explain it in a little bit more detail if I can. As I discussed, we have a proposal to construct a trail connection from the existing pedestrian bridge at the University View that crosses Paint Branch. It would extend north across a parcel of land that's owned by the University of Maryland, and then it would then extend along the rear of the property where there is an existing Taco Bell and Denny's restaurant, and then it would connect into our property. As we originally proposed it, it would stop at our property, and you can sort of see on that exhibit there, and I have a better exhibit that I'll pass out to you in a minute, where it ends along the rear of our property. If you look at your master plan for trails, and I think Mr. Diaz Campbell has an image that shows that, if you can go back to the trails plan, trails master plan. So, the master plan trails map, you can see a green dotted line, which is a proposed trail, that runs from the southern part of that image, runs along the east side of Paint Branch, runs across the rear of our property, and continues north. What we are doing as part of our development is we are connecting the trail from where it currently exists at University View to our site, and then we are connecting the trail from Paint Branch along the southern side of our building to Route 1, so that there is access to that trail. The property to the north of this property is a 7-Eleven. You may be familiar with the 7-Eleven. It is not being proposed for redevelopment at this time. What the city asked is that if we would provide a public use easement along the rear of our building to allow for the trail to be connected to the north at some point if it was ever desired or if the property ever redeveloped. It's not dissimilar from what occurred with the property that's now owned by the University of Maryland. That was proposed for redevelopment a few years ago, and Park and Planning required a trail easement, a public use trail easement to be shown on the plat, and we are using that public use trail easement in order to extend the trail across the rear of their property. So, we agreed to the city, with the city, that we would provide the easement so that if anybody ever wanted to extend it, if it was ever necessary to extend it or desired to extend it in the future, they could do that. So, our proposed condition 1C, which we are pro... So our proposed condition 1C would, which we are proffering, would be to show that public use easement that would run along the rear of our property, which is referenced as the Inman-Turner property, in order to allow for the the master plan trail to be extended to the north.
So, just for clarity, just so the others who may not know where that area is, I actually like that idea. I assume you're still going to have it prominated going back to connect to Route One. Where you see the purple line that's dotted right there, that's where, right above the purple line where it hits Route One, the other green line is where the Lidl is that just came into that area. And if you take that purple line all the way over, that actually connects into the another trail system. So there's not much east-to-west connections in that area. And by running that trail up behind the property, that could also potentially connect up later on additional trails. It's on street, there's sidewalk on that purple line right now, but you can actually get back to the trolley trail, and that takes all the way up into the other trail systems in that area. So, I like the idea of it going on the back of the property. I know that our staff have said we weren't going to accept it because we didn't know the future of other properties in that area, but I I'm happy that you're proffering that.
And we don't know the future either. This doesn't mandate it, and it would still be subject to your review and approval with and when it comes in, but it would at least it would it would be available for somebody to use, just like the one that was at the back of the University of Maryland was available for us to use when the time came.
Yeah, I like the connectivity of it.
And then, I'm sorry. And then the the final condition that I wanted to comment on with regard to the City of College Park's request is their proposed condition D, which is submit trail option B as the final trail configuration in the mandatory referral application. And I wanted to I wanted to give you an image because you don't know what trail option B is. So I thought it would be helpful if you saw it so you'd understand what their request is. And Mr. DS Campbell, if you could go to the last image on the, the very the very last one, the one that shows the tree conservation plan.
So let me have this marched into the record. So it's a depiction of of the trail, the configuration of the trail for option A and option B. We'll have this accepted into the record as applicant's exhibit number two.
And and this exhibit relates to a couple of the city's requested conditions, but it also relate, and as I think staff mentioned earlier, this this, the development of this site will include three applications that you will see. This one, the preliminary plan. There will be a mandatory referral application that will relate to the construction of the trail and construction of the compensatory storage on park property. And then the third application is the detailed site plan. But the, when when we first started on this process of trying to figure out how to make the trail connection to the existing pedestrian bridge at University View, as I mentioned before, there was a public use easement established on the back of the University of Maryland property. And then between the University of Maryland property and our property is a parcel of land that's privately owned that is improved with two restaurants, the Denny's and the and the Taco Bell. And we don't, there was no, there's no redevelopment plan for that property, and there's no trail easement along the rear of it. And so we were showing, which is reflected in option A, a trail alignment that would be all on park and planning land. That trail alignment is doable, but it's complicated. It's where there's a lot of topography, and it would require construction of a substantial area of boardwalk. It would require a sharp turn right where you get to our property. And and then on the tree conservation plan, you'll see there's an X kind of at that point, the corner up there. That's where there's a mature black walnut tree that's in good condition. And so, we have been working for several months to acquire an easement from the owner of the adjacent property that would allow us to implement option B, which would allow the trail-
Option B.
That's option B. That would allow the trail to run along the rear of the parking lot on the property next door. You can sort of see the outline on the tree conservation plan exhibit of kind of the limits of their green area. So this trail would run along the back of their property and avoid that sharp turn, avoid us removing that black walnut tree. And we are, I mean, literally like at the one-yard line of getting that resolved. We've been working with the Department of Parks and Recreation. They've reviewed the easement. We're pretty much at the point where we're going to be ready to resolve that within the next couple of days. So we don't have any problem with committing to College Park that we're going to move forward with option B, and we've indicated that to them. But it's really part of the mandatory referral process, as are the trees. So I wanted the the board to have a better visual of what the two options are and why the city is requesting those, and and understand that we do do agree with those conditions, but they're not necessarily appropriate to be placed on this preliminary plan because they relate more to the mandatory referral. And by the time we get to the mandatory referral, we will have the easement in hand, and we should not have any issues in terms of implementing the trail plan that's shown as option B.
Okay. So, all right, so we accepted into the record as applicant's exhibit two. Are there any questions on it? Okay.
And then the only other comment that I wanted to make, just in follow-up to Commissioner Droner's question about the noise, I was not aware, as Mr. Bollage said, that there are any noise restrictions related to the operation of the of a local airport such as that.
Just the building, I mean, I don't know, but I do know that there are restrictions at the state level when you're building houses or housing close to airports, that you have to meet certain certain requirements.
And we have already submitted to MAA and FAA for their approval. We've gotten a letter already. There was a request by the city to provide a little bit more prominence at the southeast corner of the building, which we raised the height of a pediment of the corner of the building. And we'll have to go back and get that that approved as well. But we've already gotten a letter from them indicating any issue with their height issue. They didn't raise a noise issue. So, I'm not aware of any standard, but we'll check into that to make sure that we address that.
I just don't know the proximity of it to the airport, but there are state regulations on that. Because they're concerned that any homeowner would buy would either be aware of it, and it deals with the decibel level of the airplane versus vis a vis the housing.
Okay. Yeah, and we'll look we'll look into that, too. And that's that's all I have. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Droner?
So I know one of the parts of our sort of rebuttal or response to the the City of College Park's letter was about not requiring any information about the afforestation in that area. But looking at your applicant exhibit two with the two different options, you may be far enough along to know about this. Would you be able to reforce the area that's closer to the stream contingent upon working with our staff and everything on on the parkland?
We would love to reforest there if there's space available to do it. Parks is fairly, Department of Parks and Recreation, I think Mr. Zyl is here, but they're generally fairly careful about giving property away for reforestation. What we will do is, we will look at the available locations that staff has available to see if there are any that are as close to this watershed as possible, and we will provide the location to the City of College Park as well. It's something we have to do it as part of the process anyway.
Yeah, I think proximity is great in the watershed, but to the extent that we can be in the stream valley as well, because there's there's significant erosion on some of the stream banks on Paint Branch, like right there, but then also as you go farther south and farther north. So to the extent that you can locate really close to the stream itself, it would be ideal because then that would, I think, have a larger nexus to the project itself.
And I agree, and as part of our working with them on the compensatory storage, we'll find, we'll ask them if they have any areas where that would be available for us to do.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
And let's call Ms. Bader, do you want to come first, followed by Ms. Shum? Okay, Ms. Shum.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Terry Shum, representing the City of College Park, City Council's position on this project. So, as you've heard, and as you can see in our letter to you, the City Council unanimously voted to support this application with the conditions before you. The applicant has agreed to all of our conditions, and the city agrees with the applicant's revisions as proffered to you today. So, I would just like to make a few comments about our proposed condition 1B, which is now 1C in the applicant's proffer. So, Mr. Haller did a good job explaining the vision for the trail behind this property, which is, as you've heard, in the county's master plan of transportation. So, it's a desired amenity. It will, for sure, be difficult to implement, given what we've already talked about, the nature of the stream valley, the steep slopes, but it's been started south of here, and because of past actions to put easements on property when they came before you for development, this applicant is able to proceed with implementing a piece of it. So, the city just wants to ensure that we don't preclude that opportunity in the future because it is important, and if we all work together, we can figure out how to make it happen. So, I noticed in the staff revisions to the staff report, the in the finding regarding this proposed condition, that it says that staff doesn't support the trail extension to the north. So I think that would be an unfortunate statement to have in a finding, and if you could revise that, I think we greatly appreciate it.
I'm going to hear their response on that one as well.
Shall I go on? You're waiting for it.
Are you ready? Okay.
Mr. Zyl is here from the Parks Department, and he could probably speak more on this. But the way that the the stream winds in this area is problematic to the location of the trail in that area. It is one of the reasons that we did recommend an easement to along the southern property line of this site in order to provide the connection to that trail so that neighboring users would be able, as we put in our our staff memorandum, to use the sidewalk along US One to get back to the promenade and to the connector trail. We would need to evaluate any other trail connection further at the time of any future development on neighboring properties.
Okay. Okay. We'll see where we go with that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. In regard to the city's proposed condition 1C, it's my understanding that that this is unnecessary. It will be addressed in the in the ordinance. I appreciate the comments I just heard about trying to have afforestation done in proximity to a project, especially within the stream valley that exists here that is in need of, you know, maintenance and and attention. So I just wanted to add that. And in regard to our condition 1D, so we understand there's a mandatory referral process, but the city may or may not have an opportunity to comment on that. We were asked to provide comments regarding the off-site improvements at this time, just so we get on the record. And I think you now understand the difference between trail option A and B, and why the city does not support trail option A, which would take down the large specimen tree. So, I guess there will be an agreement between Parks and Recreation and the applicant in regard to that. And again, the city just wanted to go on record supporting trail option B.
Well, well, that can be done in the finding that the city supports. That can be shown in the finding.
Okay, we'd appreciate that.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shum. Ms. Bader, do you wish to speak as well? Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else who wished to speak? Okay, Mr. Haller.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let me see if our legal is ready, or you're not ready, or you can't, or you don't have any. Tell me which where you are.
We asked, we asked our associate there to look into this issue for the commissioner.
Okay.
And we're waiting for his response.
Okay. So, that will take a little bit. All right.
Madam Chair, if I could just offer, we are not actually approving the buildings with this application.
Correct.
When we come back to the board with a detailed site plan, we could be prepared to answer that question at that time.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Thank you.
I didn't know if it was here or at the SDP.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, DSP. Okay. Okay. Mr. Haller?
And I have nothing further to add.
Okay. All right, so then you will be ready? Okay. All right, if there's no one else to speak, nothing else to add. Does the board have any questions of anyone? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve preliminary plan subdivision.
Does your microphone?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve preliminary plan of subdivision four dash one nine zero one nine for a parcel of development of 296 multifamily dwelling units and 1,084 square feet of commercial development, as well as approval of the variance requests from section 25 dash 122, paren B, paren one, paren G, along with all the associated staff conditions and findings, as well as the modifications in applicant exhibit one for 1A with the deletions and insertions as shown in the applicant exhibit, as well as the insertion of 1C. Also, in the staff report, I actually would like the staff report to be revised as suggested by the City of College Park. I understand fully, I read the the backup and I write in that area, I understand the staff concerns on the trail, that we don't have the extensions, it may not be able to go on the east side of the stream valley all the way up as far as we might intend it. But if we don't start somewhere, we don't start at all. And I realize the risk is that it could be a disconnected trail down the road if the development doesn't come into the north side of this parcel. I'm willing to take that risk because I think we need to start doing these kinds of things. That area is very nicely wooded, and there's, it's really nice to get out in that that zone. I'd like to promenade on this application that's going to bring people from Route One into that area, and they can go south along the east side of the river. If eventually we can go north on that side of the river as well, that'd be great. There's a supermarket right there that allows access to food options for people to come from the university and from the housing in there. There's a bunch of commercial space and restaurants as well, so I think gaining that access is good. It doesn't, it doesn't make us have to develop that. So down the road, if we think that the park says we can't actually do that, it's not going to be feasible. We don't have to do it if the terrain won't submit, if it won't work. But not taking that attempt when the applicant has offered it up, I think, would be not a great way to go. So I'd like the staff conditions actually to be supportive of that. And I realize that our initial condition was because we didn't understand the future development, we can't guess whether or not that that parcel to the north, it will actually happen, and that's fine. We can put that in there, caveated, that we don't know if it will develop, but I just would like us to be a little more supportive in that nature.
I guess I'm seconding the motion and the comments.
Okay, while it's being seconded, I need to, I need to understand the motion.
Yeah, so the motion is approval for the two, for the PPS and for the variance, approving all the conditions as outlined in the staff report and the findings as outlined, conditional upon the changes that the applicant has made in applicant exhibit one.
Correct.
And then I would like the staff report to be revised in the section about the trail in just the northern part, there's a-
You're talking about 1D?
It pertains to 1C in the staff report. I think there's a paragraph that we cite, like some of the backup material in there. I think it was on page 10, but I'd have to find it. That was just a little bit more dismissive of actually developing that that section on the trail because we didn't know about the future development of the property to the north, and they just didn't want to kind of get into it again.
But are you, so you're not talking about conditions, you're talking about findings?
Yes, just in the staff report that I want them to go back, yeah, this is not the end of the conditions. I just want them to go back and revise the staff report to be consistent with the new condition that's in there and be more supportive of the condition. So as we develop properties north of there, that we're sending the message that they should be looking at connecting those kinds of of public easements together so we can have more connections along the stream valley, and then potentially a couple of cut-throughs over to Route One so people can go back to there and access other east- so people can go back to there and access other east-west connections as well.
Okay, so that-
So it's just a staff report right there.
So, okay, so that, and the finding of where the staff was. And the other thing I want to make sure that your motion included was that you said as outlined in applicant's exhibit number 1, but I want to make sure that that applicant's, that it's shown that it was a proffer by the applicant. That's something that we listed, okay?
I did not hear- I did not hear the motion about approval of the TCP-1.
I apologize, approval of that as well. So I will accept that into my motion.
Okay, and second? For to include a finding that the City of College Park prefers Option B. I believe that's what-
That doesn't necessarily have to be a finding.
No, we talked about it being a finding.
I'm fine with including that. That's fine.
Okay. Y'all got that?
Got it.
We have a motion and a second. I think that concludes discussion unless there's not saying anymore. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Does anybody need a two-minute break right now? We have two more cases. Okay, okay. The board's going to take two minutes and then resume with 8, and then followed by 9. Who's turning our- Okay, the Prince Rogers Planning Board is back in session. We're going to go forward with item 8, followed by item 9. Item 8 is mandatory referral, MR. 1921F.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Ted Koalic, countywide planning, seeking your approval to transmit staff's recommendations for MR. 1921F, the EA Fernandez Idea Factory. Project site is located north in the county on the University of Maryland College Park campus. Here's an aerial view of the project site with the site outlined in red in the middle of your screen. The university is proposing to construct a 61,240-square-foot EA Fernandez Idea Factory on approximately .75 acres located at 4462 Stadium Drive. The site is formerly demolished Potomac Building and a portion of the Kim Engineering Plaza, and is zoned to RR. Here's proposed site plan. This is where the Potomac Building was, and the hatch is the Kim Engineering Plaza, so a little bit of that is going to be taken up by the building. Here are some elevations for the building, and the building is going to be kind of a more modern structure compared to the existing structures on the site. Here's some more elevations, the east elevation and the west elevation of the building. Staff recommendations, we recommend including bicycle racks on the site, lighting for the site, incorporating more landmark elements in the building, and also supplementary plannings on the site. As a matter of housekeeping, staff would like to make the following changes to the technical staff report. On page 3, in the second paragraph of the introduction and the background paragraph, delete the "Foundation, Inc." after "University of Maryland." On page 3 in the project-
Foundation, Inc.?
Foundation, Inc., yes. On page 3 in the-
I'm sorry, would you repeat the correction? On page 3? I didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. On page 3, in the second paragraph-
Right.
And of the introduction and the background paragraph-
Right.
Delete the "Foundation, Inc." after "University of Maryland."
Okay, thank you.
On page 3 in the project description, five-story will be replaced with five floors. And on page 6, under item 9 permitting, the word "must" in the second sentence will be changed to "may." This application has been reviewed for conformance to Planning Board's adopted uniform standards for the review of mandatory referrals, and staff recommends, again, the Planning Board transmit staff recommendations to the applicant. This concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions to Mr. Koalic? Okay, Ms. Skinner?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and all staff.
Good morning.
My name is Tracy Skinner. I represent the University of Maryland as Associate General Counsel in the Office of General Counsel. And today I have with me representatives from the project team for MR. 1921F, the EA Fernandez Idea Factory. I'd like to introduce those members. We have from the university's, and they're sitting right back here. We have from the university's Department of Planning and Construction, Dan Pierce, Sandy Williams, and Mark Green. We have from Clark Construction, Ryan Knox. We have from SRI Civil Engineering and Landscaping, Kay Moran. And I think the formal name of that is Site Resources, Inc. And then we also have from EYP Architectural and Engineering, Paul O'Connell. And you couldn't ask for a better project team. The EA Fernandez, and let me back up one minute before I start, because I always do, and I always want the staff to know, I want to thank the staff for their diligent work and thoughtful comments and considerations, and always working with the university in a collaborative manner. The EA Fernandez Idea Factory is going to be a new campus building adjacent to the Kim Engineering Building, if you can imagine a city block. Those two buildings will take up the block. And it will create a modern-day hub for education and research in the innovation in design and engineering. It's an exciting project. It's probably the most modern and futuristic building on campus. I think when people walk by, their heads will turn and their eyes will pop. I did provide some general comments to the staff recommendations, and I'm sorry, it was maybe not as timely as it should be, but I provided them to Mr. Koalic through email, and I will make certain that a formal response is set. So for the record, I would like to address the staff recommendations, so that it'll be in the record from this presentation, and I will follow up. Addressing in general items number 1, 3, and number 4. There's an overarching response for this, and that is that the campus has ongoing committees that are in planning stages to address many items that are on campus, such as siting, landscaping, connectivity, and stormwater. So the overall response to 1, 3, and 4 is that these items will be addressed and considered in the campus's overarching plans. For the more specific now, as far as producing siting details for bike racks and outdoor lighting, what they call the Kim Plaza Development, the plaza that will be in between the two buildings, Kim Engineering and the Idea Factory, there will be a separate project that, you know, in the beginning or end of March, that will take into account comments such as the bicycle racks, the outdoor lighting, and other site improvements within the plaza. So there's a cohesiveness between the two buildings. For number 2 of the staff recommendation, as I said, we, at the university and on the project team, its members do think we have presented a futuristic, modern building with landmark, and it will be a landmark. But I would like to comment on that, so that the recommendation is addressed, that the panels that are going on the building, there are some textured panels, so that would address the mention of metallic panels on that. And then also, there is a particular type of glass being used on the east facade that will actually be changing colors as the day goes on. It's iridescent, there's an iridescent film between the panels, and it'll create different colors depending on how you're viewing it, and that's shown there. So it will have that attractiveness. It will have that appeal, that aesthetic element to the eye. For number 3 on the plannings, remember number 3, there's that overarching comment about committees already being in place for items set forth in 1, 3, and 4. But also, with the bio-retention comments and planning for the site, the university does have a water steering committee. It addresses many things, stormwater management, our MS-4 permit requirements. And so there will be, you know, the review and input from that committee for this project too, with this recommendation being considered. And then for number 4, it says addressing the street trees. Again, there will be overall consideration of this. There will be a landscaping review within the university, and consideration will be given to tree planting, although it may not be along the street sited. So overall, I think that, you know, we agree with the recommendations and will consider So, overall, I think that, you know, we agree with the recommendations and will consider the recommendations, and it may not be an exact, you know, specific response when the project's done, but I think moving forward, there will be, you'll see elements developed. I will provide, again, I did provide general comments via email, and I'll make certain to provide these more, what I've said here today, but I would like those to be in the record-
Okay, so we have the general comments-
But they were not, they were late.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, Mr. Koalik, you have these?
Yes, from the email.
Okay, and so my, so I'm trying to make sure I'm clear. So, with regard to the staff recommendations, the four of them, you're not opposed, you're agreeing to consider, which is essentially what they said, especially with the last two, about the landmark elements, you are encouraged to apply more landmark elements. Obviously, we can't dictate that. You're suggesting that the lights, the iridescent lights and whatnot are a feature that address this particular comment, but you're still willing to consider more?
The design team will be considering. And there are textured panels, so I think we've addressed it. It just may not have come up through the plans-
Okay.
...that you all have.
Okay.
I think, just to point out though, that staff's probably primary concern is just with the north elevation of the building-
Okay.
...which you can see here.
And if you would like to ask any-
So, can we put that, can we, if that's your main, oh yeah, well, if that's your main concern, then can we note that in the condition, I mean, in the proposed recommendation?
Yes, we'll modify that.
Okay.
And if you have any other questions, the project team is here if you have any technical questions that you need to-
The north elevation needs some help.
Pardon me?
It looks to me like the north elevation needs some help. Sorry.
I'll pass that on.
Okay. They're hearing that, okay. Okay. Was that it?
That is it. If there's no questions-
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to know, do you have any plans to use the top floor, the rooftop? So, if this is going to be sort of innovative and futuristic, I realize most of this is IT or robotic facing, but I don't know if you've considered either like a green kind of rooftop where you'd have plants getting irrigated, you could design systems to have automatic irrigation or to retain water, or like actually solar panels or anything else that'd be kind of like in that line?
I am going to ask if someone on our project team can address that for you, if I may, and ask them to come to the well.
Thank you, and please, even though you've been introduced, please identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My name is Sandy Williams. I'm a project manager for the university-
Can you raise, can you raise the microphone?
Mike Griffin? Sure. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm with the Planning and Construction Department with the University of Maryland, so I'm the primary contact for this building. The rooftop is actually a mechanical penthouse. We have to have all standalone systems for chillers and mechanical systems and things of that nature. We do have a raised terrace. You'll see, we're calling this kind of the plinth option with the ground floor that has the curtain wall system, so that rooftop is going to be used as an extension of the café seating, along with some donor and school of engineering activities that they have. So, we did consider a green roof. We did have that pricing, but unfortunately, the budget for the project could not facilitate having the green roof. So, we are adding significant bioretention areas along the south side of the project, and as Tracy mentioned before, the development of Kim Plaza is going to be in conjunction with the construction of the Idea Factory. However, that project will not kick off until March, and in, when we do kick off that project, we are addressing some of the bioretention areas, the stormwater management, as you mentioned before, but that is going to be a separate funded project.
Thank you. In the future, as you guys develop out more, more buildings, it might not be a bad idea since you're leading kind of this area and you're in the IT and kind of the quarter, to actually see if you can do more green rooftops or things like that, to see if you can help sort of advance any sort of understanding about it? Because most of the building tops in that area, if you do aerials, are just, it's concrete, it's just sort of like flat.
Understood, yes, understood. Thank you.
Are there other questions?
If I may follow up, I'm not certain that the IRE building is a true green roof, but it does have the plannings and everything, but I'm not certain it's the green roof with the drainage, but I think with the plannings and how it's designed, there is that element, and that was a recent building. Also, I will say, this isn't to your green roof, but I know that the university is very proud of its solar panels on its parking garage. So, there is always thought given to sustainability, and I think it's a good comment, and I think it will, the university will continue to build on that.
Great, thank you.
So, with that, Madam Chair, I would ask, and I think I did, but I would ask that the board move and approve the staff recommendations with the supplemental information and response that I've put here of record, and I appreciate that.
Okay, Madam Vice Chair.
Just one quick question. I noted in the staff report, did indicate that you did send information out to the civic associations and the community, and no response, I mean, you had not, no one requested additional information. To this date, has that occurred? Has anyone else, anyone requested additional information in the community?
From what I know, there has been no additional information requested. I will ask the project team to confirm that. It's confirmed, there's been none.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Skinner.
Well, thank you, and before you get to business, I always do enjoy what your announcements are in the beginning-
Thank you.
-and you ask people to do this-
Please don't tell her that, she'll add to them.
So, I am, I am going to do this.
Okay.
I'm going to give a shout-out to the sororities and fraternity on their anniversaries of their Founder's Day.
We thank you.
A happy birthday to Bill Haley, and congratulations to Brittany, and a warm welcome to the soon-to-be Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would-
Microphone.
I move that we approve mandatory referral dash 1921F, along with the findings and the recommendations, which are taken into account the comments made by the University of Maryland, and specifically with regards to staff recommendation, a bullet one, that it would be the outdoor lighting on the north elevation of the building, as well as to make those changes recommended by staff, in which on page three, second paragraph, we're going to delete the University of Maryland Foundation, we just read the University of Maryland. On page three, five floors, under project description, will be changed, and under item nine, page six, the permitting must will be changed to "may."
Second. And also, for the second recommendation, that the university is encouraged to apply more landmark elements to the north elevation-
Yes.
Okay, of the building, okay. Insert that, right? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And you know what, while we were doing shout-outs, I'm going to do a matter of personal privilege and do a shout-out to an iconic attorney in Prince George's County. He has since retired. He was a founding member of the law firm of what is now Myers, Rob Bell &amp; Rosenbaum. So, we can give a shout-out birthday, a shout-out to William V. Myers, known as Bill Myers, on his milestone birthday, soon to be joined by others. Okay. Happy birthday, Bill. Thank you. Item nine.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'm Chair Members of the Board. I'm Christine Osay, County White Planning. I'm presenting on item nine, Monitor Report 1933F, the Smithsonian, Sudland Collection Center Master Plan. The project was referred to the Planning Department by the National Capital Planning Commission through the Maryland Clearing House, which is at the Maryland Department of Planning. The request is to review a proposed master plan for the Smithsonian Collection Center, which is located at 4210 Silver Hill Road. The goal of the master plan is to improve the stewardship of Smithsonian Collection, address current and future storage and space needs, and relocate its gate and improve connections from the metro station to the site. The site is, let me get to the- Okay, the site is located in the southern portion of the county council, District Seven. The area shot shows the site location, which is highlighted in red. The northern part of the site is Sudland Federal Center. This is the Sudland Metro Station, the Sudland Parkway, and this is Silver Hill Road. The vicinity map shows the area, the site which is highlighted in red, and you can see the metro track-
Right.
-that comes all the way to the metro station. The master plan right away shows Sudland Parkway, which buffers the northern portion of the site, which is shown in blue. The natural future side, the natural future map shows the area which shows the northern portion of the site, which is south of the Parkway, has steep slopes and woodlands. You can see that the site has been developed over time, avoiding those areas, which is highlighted in purple. The existing zone is OS. The existing woodland, which also shows existing development on the site, the woodlands also mimic the natural features, which shows the trees and steep slopes south of the Parkway, and earlier development that's occurred on the site from the Gobo Development Park all the way to the National Museum of American Indian and Cultural Research Center. This is the existing area feature of the site, which shows exactly how the site has been developed since 1970 till today. This shows connections to the site. As I mentioned before, the connections from the metro station, which is the Sudland Metro Station, how people travel from the metro station to the site is shown here, and you can see the access that is taken by travelers, employees who use metro, and able from Washington, DC, coming to the research center, how they travel to the site, and the different access points that I showed in yellow, from this one to this, this, and this. These access points we discuss as we go into the presentation because the master plan is proposing changes. The Smithsonian has goals. This master plan would update the 1993 plan and bring some new features. So, these are some of the goals of the new master plan, that a new master plan we intend to see happen on the site. This is a master plan map. Other than the project you just saw, this is a concept plan, which has a development plan of 40 years. It shows you outline how planning may occur and how development may occur. There's no specific project for this project, but it shows you an illustration of what may happen in 40 years, and it may happen this same way, or it may change in 40 years. So, this is a nice, broad concept plan, outlining exactly the goals of the Smithsonian Institution for the Collection Center, what will happen as time goes through. So, this is an outline of their future development plan that outlines what may happen. I show the metro station to be here, the connections that they take to get to the site are shown here, and this is one of the features that may change over the future, which the relocation of their main entrance today, to address security issues. Where today, when you come to go into the center, you have to drive in to be checked in. They're trying to make it a center where the visitor is outlined and carved out, where you drive in, you are dressed in that area, and you'll be able to go, escorted to your area. Today, you don't have that. So, that's one of the main concerns, address the future entrance into the facility. The facility is a research center. It does not allow visitors to come, you have to be invited, by appointment only. One of the issues I mentioned before has to do with the trail connection, which is walking from the Sudland Metro Station to the site. The above image shows Silver Hill Road. Today, when you're walking, coming down from Sudland Metro Station, you come through three ramps over the Parkway, and then come to the Silver Hill Road, you are exposed, the pedestrian is exposed to cars. That path of the sidewalk is very narrow, and it's a heavily traveled trail to the metro station. It is not wide enough to accommodate a lot of people with strollers, especially when you go over the ramp. So, the top level shows you what the situation today has to do with safety. The pedestrian is exposed to cars on the street, there's no buffer. The southern part of it shows you multi-trail system, which is recommending a 2014 Green Line Plan, that it should be built from, that connects south of the Parkway down to Branch Avenue. And the Smithsonian is recommending what they can do on their frontage, and that's what the southern image shows you. They will be able to move the pedestrian further inside and provide a buffer between the cars and the street, and this would occur on their property, hopefully with an easement, and it will bring in multi-agency involvement, because Silver Hill Road is not a county road, it's a state highway road. The ramp over the Sudland Parkway are controlled by the National Park Service, and so you have to bring all these agencies in to be able to work together to make this happen. The permitting agencies that will look for the site when the development actually happens, remember I said at the beginning, this is a concept plan. When we get to the stage where future development is actually identified, buildings on the site are identified, then the permitting agency will come in to review those particular buildings to the standards of this agency. Of course, an access permit will be required, since the main entrance is relocated along Silver Hill Road. The state highway administration will be involved to provide that access permit. Staff recommendations, there are nine staff recommendations in the report. The first four are general enough because of urban design, but they're not specific because they, it's not a specific project in this proposal to actually come up with specific design for a building. So, that's why the first four are so general in nature, and it just asks the Smithsonian to look into them as they get into future building, when buildings are actually specified. The last five has to do with the multi-trail and the challenges along Silver Hill Road from the metro station down beyond the frontage of the Sudland Collection Center. This concludes staff presentation, and there are two project managers, one project manager from the applicant's team, who we have worked with since 2016, to be able to bring all the agencies to work together and give input before the master plan was developed. And so, we have Ms. Ann Pasman is here, and we have Ann Trobridge is here, and we have Jane Pasman, and they may be able to add or answer any question the staff, the planning board may have. And staff requests the planning board to transmit the report and the recommendations to the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osay. Are there any questions to Ms. Osay at this time? Okay, saying none. So, is it Passman?
Pass.
Okay, do you wish, or Ms. Trobridge, do either of you wish to speak?
I would speak briefly.
Okay, come on down. And again, please identify yourself for the record.
Good, I'm Ann Trobridge, Associate Director for Planning at the Smithsonian. Good afternoon-
Good afternoon.
-Chairperson, and members of the commission and the public. We are very grateful for Ms. Osay's help in shepherding this project through the Planning Commission and its staff, as well as for helping us reach out to the appropriate contacts at the Maryland State Highway Association and MDE, as well as to notify neighbors and local civic groups about our upcoming plan. We have reviewed the staff recommendations. I want to say that a couple of them require cooperation- I want to say that a couple of them require cooperation from other federal agencies and perhaps their funding, specifically items six and seven, which actually occur off our site on park service land. So we will be hoping that they are strongly recommended by the National Capital Planning Commission, where they have a seat to improve those pedestrian crossings. There are several unsignaled on-off ramps, as well as a 100-feet-wide curb cut to the National Park Service Maintenance Facility. So we will be asking them to collaborate in putting those into their capital plan. We are very committed to creating a better pedestrian environment along Silver Hill Road, and when that project is ready for implementation, we'll reach out to Ms. Osay again and coordinate with the state and local agencies. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the plan.
Thank you. Ms. Trobridge, we, it's interesting, because, and I've been to another site where we, where we have, where you house exhibits for the African-American museum, that's not the title, but it was, it's a very interesting tour, and it's lovely to see some of the facilities that we have, and of course, our own museum, our own College Park Aviation Museum is an affiliate of the Smithsonian, I just have to throw that in there. Are there questions or comments? And if no, do you have anything else to add, Ms. Osay?
No, Madam.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve staff's recommendations in MR 1933F, the mandatory referral.
For them?
For the Smithsonian, the Smithsonian Sudland Collection Center Draft Master Plan.
And to transmit.
Transmit it to the staff report with the recommendations to the applicant, and then the applicant, of course, has written response within 30 days of the hearing, citing any variation from the board's recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
There's some discussion. I don't know if I can technically vote on these kinds of issues for ethical reasons, so I'm just going to abstain from the vote or withdraw myself from the vote.
Until you, I think you're probably okay, but that's okay, until we get clarity, okay? And you would say that because of your work with the federal government, okay? Okay, so we'll note the one abstention. All in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, one abstention. Okay, Mr. Hunt, is there any additional business to come before the planning board today?
Madam Chair, this off with the day.
Planning Board is adjourned.